Okay, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say that the mayor is in DC on business and Councilman Maldonado and Councilwoman Lobos, they're out of state at a conference as well. So this is it. This is it. I'd like to call the Wednesday, June 22nd, 2011 council meeting to order, and the time is 5:35. This evening, we will have the invocation by Pastor Block Schiffer, Pastor Speedway Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So Pastor, and could we please stand?
It's a privilege to open in prayer for the This Is It Committee for the evening. Heavenly Father, on this Father's Day week, we're reminded that we truly do have a Heavenly Father that far surpasses any earthly being. Father, we thank you for what you mean in our lives. We thank you that you provide, and you only provide, the answers that matter. As diversified as this city is, as diversified as this country is, Father God, we can unite under you and your Son. And so I ask that you would bless these endeavors, that you would bless Tallahassee, that you would bless Homestead, you would bless each and every family member here this evening, and Father, that collectively, collectively, we would put our own agendas aside, seek your wisdom and your counsel, and may all of us leave Homestead better than we found it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Pastor. Councilman Shelley, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Will call Madam Clerk. Councilman Burgess?
Here.
Councilwoman Lobos. Councilman Maldonado. Councilman Shelley?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walman?
Here.
Mayor Bateman. Okay, now at this time, I'm going to open the floor to public comments. So do we have anyone that would like to share anything with us? No, not at this time? All right. Um, deletions or additions?
None.
Okay. Do the public, do they have the corrected agendas with the tab changes and everything? Okay, okay, fine. We had a few changes yesterday, so... Okay, special presentations at this time. I'll turn it over to our City Attorney.
As we had discussed at a prior council meeting, this year marked the 20th anniversary of our law firm. And we tried to come up with an idea of, to show the community, to show the cities that we represent, that we were grateful for the fact that we had had the 20 years, and to somehow mark that anniversary. So what we did was, in each city that we represent, we did an essay contest. And from April 4th to May 2nd, 2011, we solicited essays from students living in Homestead for essays entitled "Why My City Is Special." And we had a very good response from this area. And Councilman Maldonado, and myself, and Brooke Delar from our office, read through all the essays. And the, we've selected the winner who's here tonight. His name is William Dodd, who's a senior at Homestead Senior High School. And if Mr. Dodd would come up here. And he's, he's here tonight with his fiancee. And congratulations. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have Mr. Dodd, there were 500-word essays, and we're gonna have Mr. Dodd read his essay, and then I'm gonna give him his award.
Corpur sparks bursting into the night sky, smoky fog dripping down slowly as the beautiful lights die in the midst of air. I love to feel my teeth sinking into the beefy barbecue bacon cheeseburger, and to enjoy an ice-cold root beer soda which quinces my thirst and perfect satisfaction. I love visiting Homestead Sports Complex on the 4th of July. A celebration takes place annually at Homestead Sports Complex on the 4th of July. Approximately 1,000 people come to hear music, watch performances on the coastal fields before all of the action really takes place. Homestead may be stereotyped as the country part of Miami, but on this day, firecrackers make it resemble bright lights in Clark City. While everyone, sorry, while everyone else is playing with sparklers and firecrackers in their modern backyard, we Homesteaders have a, have a specific place to gather around and just rejoice in a sense of community on such a calm, relaxed day. Moral race, more of the special activities aren't limited to just the summer. Filthy white sneakers hay in my hair, and dirty hands never stop me from visiting our annual Homestead rodeo. Here's where all the bright lights in the big city fade away, and the country flavor bounces back on the scene. The best part about the rodeo is getting to watch animals in action, just as one would do by watching the Discovery Channel, only here, it is live in color and firsthand. Jerome, those are the sounds, those are the sounds of jets soaring through the night, I mean, soaring through the sky during Wings Over Homestead Airshow over at the Air Reserve, Air Reserve Base. I literally wake up to the morning alarm, and that's not even the awesome part. They park their cars in backyards by nearby lakes, just, I mean, yeah, just to see twin planes zooming through, zooming through the skies and doing all sorts of neat tricks. Last but not least, there's the Homestead Miami Speedway, and the Homestead Miami Speedway and the Homestead Bayfront Park. The Speedway is the stadium where the NASCAR races are held. Every time, every time there is a race, I can literally hear zooming sounds crashing through the waves, crashing, crashing in the air, in the airwaves, and ringing through my ears like thunderous clashes. In addition, once you enter Biscayne National Park, you'll fall in love with nature. You can go canoeing or walking in the farthest, in the farthest end of the deck to see out, to see out into the beautiful ocean. Digging in the sand, you'll find unique shells, crabs, and tide pools. Other sites and events, including the new paintball stadium by the Air Reserve, by the Air Reserve Base, and, no, sorry, the Rib Fest every November at the Air Reserve Base Park, and also Cinco de Mayo Celebration held at Harris Field. I never forget to stop by for a free scrumptious and delectable toast rolls. These attractions and activities make Homestead unique. The next time you're passing by or around the area, you should definitely look into staying the weekend in Homestead. It would surely be a life-changing and memorable experience.
So, on behalf of our firm, I'd like to present you with this $1,000 check to be used, however you feel like you would like to use it, and congratulations. Here's the real check.
William, William, why don't you make sure that our clerk has your name and phone number and address? Because maybe there's a few people in the audience, including we here at the city, that could help you make some of your dreams come true by visiting some of the things that you mentioned in your essay. I thought it was beautiful. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Shelley?
Thank you Vice Mayor. About six months ago or so, I created a program that allowed local artists of various types, whether photography, painting, sculptures, any type of thing, to display their work here, showcase their work here in the council chambers. For the next two months, from June and July, Mr. Paul Marcelini will be the photographer who will be displaying this beautiful work here in the chambers, for us all to enjoy. Paul's been internationally published and won several photography awards. The most recent award for an image of Biscayne National Park that won grand prize in the Florida Wildlife Magazine 2010 photo contest. Paul grew up in the Redlands, and his family has a history with the city of Homestead. His father received a Homestead key to the city for his community service as the president of the East Everglades Orchid Society, and for organizing several orchid shows in Homestead. His grandmother also has an avocado grove in the Redlands. I'd like to share a little story. The first time I met Mr. Marcelini, for those who don't know, I'm an amateur photographer myself. I like to get out there in nature and take pictures. So actually, I was chasing a lightning storm. I ran up the Everglades about 30 miles out there, dressed in my bug suit, I've got pants on, I've got snake boots on, and I get to my spot that I wanted to take a picture, and there was Mr. Marcelini. He's definitely more at one in nature than I am. He had shorts, a tee-shirt, he was barefoot, walking around, no concerns, and I'm worried I'm gonna get bit by a snake, so... He definitely is better than I am. But this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Marcelini to come up and tell you a little bit about what he does and his work, and maybe give you some information on how to contact him in case you're interested in purchasing any of his work.
I'd like to say thanks for having me here. It's definitely a privilege to have my work. Do I need to move that over? Yeah, like Councilman Shelley said, I'm definitely more at home in flip-flops or whatever, over being dressed up. But anyways, most of my work is South Florida. Everything hanging here is Tampa South, a lot of Everglades, Biscayne Bay. And that's what's great about down here, you know, everyone talks about Miami as being such a developed area, but the Everglades is 1.5 million acres. On the other side, we have Biscayne Bay. It's actually one of the only places, I think, that has two national parks bordering it. Big Cypress is another 750,000 acres. So we really do have a lot of wild places to escape to, you know, for even a day trip, nothing, no big excursion at all. So that's what I've grown up doing, you know, going out to the Everglades since I was a little kid, Anhinga Trail, you know, big tourist spot. So a lot of this is a little more off the beaten path than, you know, Anhinga Trail, but it's still, you know, beautiful, wild area, and I'm wanting to show Florida, a lot of people, I do art shows, and they just can't believe this is Florida. They don't know this is their own backyard. So, you know, I'm definitely privileged to be able to hang this in a public place, and so thanks for having me. My website is PaulMarcellini.com. It's M-A-R-C-E-L-L-I-N-I. I sell fine art prints, and, you know, if you wanna get out swamp tromping with some alligators, give me a call too. Thank you.
They're so beautiful. I just commented to Councilman Shelley that they look like paintings. I mean, they're just beautiful, beautiful. And if my husband calls you, tell him no. Because he loves photography, and I don't want him kidnapped by an alligator. Ms. Laura, Mavericks High School, do you need me down there, or? You do, okay.
I'm here tonight to make a presentation to Ms. Judy Waldman and the city of Homestead in regards to their support for Mavericks High. Recently, I don't know if Judy knows this or not, but last week, I was appointed principal of Mavericks High, so I have taken over the role of making sure that Mavericks High goes in the direction of success. I'm very excited about it. I believe in our children. In the city of Homestead, there is definitely a need for a program like Mavericks High, and we have taken every step necessary to make sure that these students who struggle in other areas of learning, in other schools, or in daily life, have an option to be able to finish their high school diploma. Last week, we had our graduation, my first graduation with Mavericks High, we graduated 16 students who would have otherwise, two of them, I personally convinced not to quit. They were gonna go for their GED, and I told them, "You're not doing that, I'm sorry." And they did it, they graduated. And Judy Waldman came out and supported us at our graduation, and made our kids feel extremely special. And tonight, I just wanted to, on behalf of Mavericks, tell Judy thank you, and give her this plaque that says, "An appreciation of Judy Waldman for your support and dedication to the students of Mavericks High 2010-2011. Thank you so much."
This wasn't necessary, and I'm totally surprised. Thank you. But I have to tell you, and I told the kids last, I think it was a week ago, yesterday, that even though I've had the opportunity to speak before many graduating classes, that meant more to me last Monday night than any speech I had given to students, because these were kids that were really gonna go the wrong way, had they not had beautiful teachers, and devoted teachers like Tammy, that guide them and take them by the hand and say, "Yes, you can, yes, you can." And it was my pleasure, one boy, he didn't even know how to read when he came into Tammy's school, it was ninth grade, right, or tenth? He didn't know how to read, so we gave him a certificate to a bookstore so he could get summer books, and it was just so touching. There were so many happy, happy parents in the audience, and it was my pleasure, pleasure and privilege, and congratulations. I've known this, I've known this young girl for many, many, many years, and we have family together, friendships together, and she's gonna make a wonderful principal, and I look forward to working many years with you, Tammy. Thank you, thank you very much. I guess I'll just stay up here, since I'm on next. And that is the Relay for Life. So Mike, could you join me? Excuse me. I should say a little something about Michael. Michael is our Relay for Life chairperson. I'm so proud of him. He works for the city of Homestead, and as a cancer survivor, breast cancer survivor, no one knows more than me how much it means to have people in your corner fighting for our survivors, and our people who are still going through it, and the people who cross the finish line a little too fast. But I chaired Relay for many years, and I know how hard it is, so I'm, I'm, I'm in your shoes, I understand. And this young man, he just gave it his all, he really, really did, and I'm so proud of him, and he wanted to give some presentations tonight, so I had to say how wonderful you are, Michael. And I talked to the manager, and this year, the city's gonna get more involved, the city, every department used to have a team, every single department had a team. I'm looking at all your directors over there. And we've got to come back, we've gotta show the community that we not only expect you to participate, but we have to do it too, okay?
Good evening. My name is Michael Head. I'm the event chair for the 2011 Relay for Life, as well as serving as a team captain for the city of Homestead. The Relay for Life is more than just a fundraiser, it is a life-changing event that gives everyone in communities across the globe a chance to celebrate the lives of people who have battled cancer, remember loved ones lost, and to fight back against the disease. It also represents the hope that those lost at cancer will never be forgotten, and that those who face cancer will be supported, and hope that one day, cancer will be eliminated. People often ask me, "Why do I do it?" Simply put, five years ago, Christie asked me to. I'd never heard of the Relay for Life prior to that, but I found out that it was a great way to honor my father. After all, that is what Relay is about. To me, my father was the greatest man in the world. Although he was overseas fighting for his country when I was born, he was always there for me, always encouraging me to work harder, make the right choices, and overall, be a better person. After serving in the Army for 22 years, he retired, and we moved to Homestead. Shortly after, the years of long, working long days to provide for his family, combined with his smoking and his exposure to Agent Orange and Vietnam, began taking a toll on him. We could tell something was very wrong, but never imagined. My dad was tough, and he was proud, too proud. He refused to admit anything was wrong, let alone go see a doctor. Finally, after the convincing, we made him go. Shortly after, we received a devastating news, he had an aggressive form of lung cancer. His fight began. After the first few chemo treatments, he came home with a smile, feeling strong. We were optimistic. Unfortunately, that optimism did not last long. The cancer soon began to spread all over his body, and we watched this man, once so strong and independent, suddenly needing help for even the littlest of tasks. Christmas Day of 1995 was the last time I saw a smile on my father's face. The following week, he could barely speak, let alone move. And on New Year's Day of 1996, he lost his battle. But tonight is not just about me. We're here to recognize all the people who have generously donated their time, talents, and money to a very important cause. This year, the city of Homestead's team raised over $4,000 and helped in the fight against cancer, and we still have more upcoming fundraisers. Even, excuse me, each of these individuals has their own reason for helping with the Relay for Life, whether it was a personal experience with cancer, or just out of the goodness of their heart. I'd like to take this time to thank everyone for helping me make this year's Relay for Life a huge success.
Anna White?
Yes, please.
I'll give it to Anna White.
Here's Anna White. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Steve Bateman, who's not here, for allowing us to do this. Councilman John Burgess, who's nice enough to take one for the team in the dunk tank several, several times. Councilman Elvis Mondalado, he's not here right now. City Manager George Gretis, thank you very much. Eileen Fernandez is not here. Okay, I'm gonna break this down by departments. First of all...
Did you say George?
Yes, I did. Sorry. Customer Service Department, who helped me a lot. Richard Vega, please come up. As I call your name, please go up and get your plaque. Betsy Matteano, she's not here. Amanda Carr. Joshua Prater. Donna Luna. Tanisha Reed. Diana K. Bell. Nuberto Granados. City Clerk's Office. Lourdes Laniel. Patty Sullivan.
Patty's here.
Patty's here?
I was.
Was? At Procurement, Carol McPatrick. Parks and Rec. Dennis Mettan, who also decided to give him the dunk tank. Thank you very much, Dennis.
And I'm sorry, I cheated. I just kept punching. I paid my dollars, but I punched.
Eric Weiss, who was an integral part of, of helping me. Carrie Floodie. Nope. Out of the Water and Sewer Department. Kevin White. Scott Yacht. Gary Shaffer. Nope, none. Electric Utilities. Marco Chiano. Ray Ramirez. Jason Wilkerson. Josh Ingram, John Ingram, rather. Jose Landrin. And Kristy Thompson. She, she was a wonderful, she, she held my hand through this, all the questions I've had. Thank you very much, Kristy. See, I didn't forget about you. Building and zoning. Fran Schwartz. From the Police Department. Like, thank Scott Bell. Ray DeJean. Jan Ornstein. Alyssa Bornes, Barker. Nope. And the Solid Waste Department, Milton Bailey. Also thank our community partners in this, who donate to all our bake sales and our rallies, Diaz Supermarkets. And for the kids who cook for our bake sales, Annelis Izaguirre.
Better known as Annie.
Okay, Annie, thank you. Tony Benningport. And I'd like to thank a few special people. First of all, Jasmine Lopez. She was there for me every day, for every event. Thank you very much, Jasmine. Jackie Philkington. Her enthusiasm drove me to keep going more. Anna Paneki. Thank you very much for answering all my questions and putting up with me. Elizabeth Sewell. She's not here? Thank you, her. And Vice Mayor Judy Waldman. She has walked me through all this, and I appreciate every little bit she's done for me. Thank you very much.
Can we get a picture? Well, wait, 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 I have a little something, I'm sorry. I said all the things I wanted to say about Mike, he's just a wonderful person, but I wanted to give him this beautiful plaque, and just tell him what a fine volunteer you are, and how wonderful you are to the city. And we'll see you back for Relay for Life.
Yes, ma'am.
So, congratulations.
Thank you.
And here's a little...
Oh, well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Get a picture?
Pictures? Jackie, come back here. No running.
We're gonna have to show some love.
Yeah.
Anna?
Anna?
Let's go up right up front there. Yeah, I gotta go. Right up front. Thank you. Don't worry.
Are we good? Are we good? I don't have my plaque. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I wanted to tell Michael, this past weekend, at the bazaar, the Father's Day bazaar, we had a drawing, a raffle, and it was from a sprayer that was given to us by Homestead Moore. And we raised $337 for Relay for Life.
Thank you very much, Jackie.
Thank you. See, that's the way you kick off your team. Directors. Believe me, once you do it, you'll never go back. I mean, it's such a beautiful thing to see. All right. We're done with that.
Consent?
Consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move it. Second. Vice Mayor, the item under Tab 3, which is the budget amendment, we'd like to take separately as an ordinance, but if you could approve the rest, and then we'll read that later on the agenda.
Okay, is that all right, everyone? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Public hearings.
Yes, please be advised upon items on the agenda of quasi-judicial nature. If you wish to comment on any of these items, please indicate the item number you would like to address when the announcement regarding the quasi judicial item is made. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made available after the applicant and staff has made their presentations on each item. Swearing in, all testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to either be cross-examined or sworn, your testimony will be given its due date. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the council to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. The full agenda packet on each item is hereby entered into the record. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for the organization. Further details of the quasi judicial procedures may be obtained from the clerk. In accordance with Code Section 2-591, any lobbyist must register before addressing the council on any of the following items. At this time, council members must disclose any ex parte communications they've had concerning any of the following quasi items.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, I have a Tab 11 and Tab 14. I've talked with both applicants.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I, too, on Tab 11 and Tab 14, have spoken with the applicants.
And I have as well.
Thank you. At this time, the clerk will swear on any persons who wish to testify in any of the following quasi judicial items.
Please stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name. Hereby swear or affirm that the information I present shall be the truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, let's get started. Tab 10?
Yes, Tab 10 is a resolution of the city of Homestead, Florida, approving a request to vacate a portion of northeast 30th Terrace, and reserving to the city all rights over any needed public utility easements. Pursuant to Resolution 2010-0772, the city accepted a right-of-way dedication from Villa Portofino East Community Development District for a portion of Northeast 30th Terrace. Subsequent to the right-of-way dedication, the applicant applied and received a PVD and PLAT amendment from the city. The amendment provided for a slight modification and realignment of Northeast 30th Terrace in order to provide for the future development of the Marriott Hotel. As such, a small portion of the previously dedicated right-of-way owned by the city is currently included within the Marriott, within the proposed Marriott Hotel site. The applicant is requesting the city vacate this 2,649 square foot portion of the road so that their parking lot can be built as approved, is no longer utilized or needed by the city.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Yeah, I'll open it to public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak? Or, up to you, whoever it is. Okay. Would anybody like to speak in opposition or in favor of? I'll close the public hearing. Any final comments from council? We'll call them. Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
All right, next. Motion approved. Oh, good. Motion carried. All right, next, Ryan McFulley.
Yes, moving on to Tab 11. Tab 11 is a final order of the City of Homestead, Florida granting a certificate of use to allow the operation of a restaurant with on-premises sale and consumption of beer and wine located at 2425 Northeast 8th Street as legally described in Exhibit A and providing for an effective date.
I move it.
All right, I have a first and a second. Staff report?
Staff recommends that the Vice Mayor and Council approve the final order granting a certificate of use to allow the sale of beer and wine for consumption on premises only. This request is made on the auspices of the City of Homestead City Code, Part 2, Chapter 3, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 3.11, Public Hearing, See Certificate of Use. The city has a very well-defined review process that requires an application to be submitted, then evaluated by the staff and the applicant. Staff makes a recommendation based on whether the applicant meets each of the six criteria in the code. The application is reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board and the City Council. We've reviewed this application and staff and recommend the approval of certificate of use as it meets the criteria set forth in the code. The Planning and Zoning Board, however, voted four to two to deny the request.
Okay. Yes, I'll give up to council now. Mr. Burgess?
If I could. I've been out there and visited. I fully understand the P&amp;Z's concerns, but I also feel that this is a controllable situation to take care of what P&amp;Z's concerns were. And if anybody's visited out there, they'll understand that the patio is set up like a regular restaurant, where you come in, sit down, excuse me, you come in, you order, you sit down, you wait on your food, and you're gonna be there. And from what I'm being told, it's gonna be restricted solely to the patio area. They're hours fall within, they did away with the extended hours that they requested originally. And I understand that P&amp;Z's concerned about getting into a car, but any restaurant, that could happen. And I feel like we should at least give them a chance, and if we have problems, then we'll go back to them and rectify. But I think it's important that we do give them a chance to try their brand or what Sonic is doing out there. It's a new type of Sonic with the beach and all that that they've put out there. And I believe it's, what they're shooting for is for it to be like any normal restaurant and a family atmosphere in there and not a big bar-type atmosphere. And I believe what was explained to me is that they can control going in and out. So if people are trying to order and take it out to their cars, that they could, they're gonna put controls in place and make sure that doesn't happen. So I will be in favor of this. I think it's a good thing for the business, and I think we need to be supportive of them, and I think it would be a big plus for them, and I think it'll be another plus for the citizens if somebody wants to go out and partake in those type of activities, so.
Before I take other comments or questions from council, I just want to say that I, too, was under the impression that people were gonna drive in, order a beer, order a glass of wine in their car, and have the opportunity to drive off. But that is so entirely not the truth. It's not the facts. And not only is it a patio area, it's a fenced patio area. And I did a lot of research on this. I made sure that the people were schooled, they were taught, they were trained professionally. They know that those beverages cannot leave that patio area. So to me, it's no different than going to Applebee's or any other restaurant where you have a controlled situation and you have rules and regulations. And those rules are that you do not leave that patio area. So I'm in favor for it as well. I don't know if maybe it wasn't, I was kinda confused with the P&amp;Z ruling. I understand that it's always a danger, and it's up to the server not to serve a person if they've had too much to drink. You have to be very careful with that. So with that being said, I had to put my two cents in there because I, too, was under the belief that it was gonna be, I still can't get over the drive-through liquor stores. I mean, and if you wanna complain about something, that's something you complain about. But anyway, any other comments or questions?
Madam Vice Mayor, same thing. I had the same concerns. I read this application, and I was thinking, why would a fast-food restaurant need, you know, beer and wine? It just didn't make a lot of sense to me. And I read the P&amp;Z amendments, and I had similar concerns. And so I actually called the applicant and said, I wanna come see your operation. And I did go out there this morning, and I looked at it, and it's a unique business model. What it is, is essentially you have your normal fast-food, which is your drive-through window. You have what Sonic's known for, which is your drive-up, park-and-eat. And then you have this new bottle that I guess Sonic is pursuing now that is almost like an outdoor restaurant. That's really what it is. There's TVs, it's fenced in, you sit down, you eat, you see somebody get seated. So it's a unique business model, which I hope succeeds. I think it fits here in the city. So it did alleviate a lot of the concerns that I have regarding giving them beer and wine or the ability to sell beer and wine. So I do support this as well.
Mr. Burgess, anything?
Yeah, I just got one question. I don't know if the applicant can answer it. But what control mechanisms do you have in place to guard, to have a safeguard with some of these concerns? If they can answer it.
The applicant would like to step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Johnny Winton. My address is 15 Shore Drive East. The question is, and all of this is regulated by the state of Florida, so we have, in fact, we have the person who owns the company or runs the company. We're required, in order to have a license to sell wine and liquor, we have to, we've hired a company called Responsible Vendors. Responsible Vendors not only trains our employees to understand exactly how to control the consumption of beer and wine, how you can deliver beer and wine, what you can do and can't do, but we're required also by law, by that license, to have them come back on a quarterly basis from now until, I guess, law changes, a quarterly basis to both test our employees, test the system, and make sure that we're following all of those rules and regulations and that our employees are, in fact, well-trained to control both the consumption and the delivery of the product to our customers.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Could I answer your question, Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
To the applicant.
Yes, sir.
If it would ease the mind of the citizens of Homestead and those that have concerns, would you be acceptable if we were to add a condition that said, because in the language it doesn't say, "on the patio only"?
I think we would have no objection for that. That is absolutely-
I mean, I know that's the intent, but if it's in the language-
We have no problem whatsoever adding that language in.
I think that would make everybody feel a lot better.
Absolutely, absolutely. We have, we never wanted anyone, we think it's irresponsible to have someone drive up and we hand a beer out a window. That doesn't make any sense at all. That's not what we're trying to do. We're just trying to provide a family-friendly environment out on that patio. It's only beer and wine, and we think that the community of Homestead, the people who are visiting our store are really gonna have, enjoy it. We've created a Sonic restaurant that's designed to provide not only high-quality product, but a fun environment for the citizens of Homestead who are coming. So that's our intent.
Okay, Mr. Burgess, do you want to-
Well, I'd make a motion then that we add in the condition that the applicant agreed to, that beer and wine sales would only be on the patio of the premises of the Sonic.
Is that agreeable? Okay. I just wanted to say that my husband went over and had lunch today, and he brought me back a hamburger. It was delicious. And I just want the public to know that this company is bringing over 140 jobs to our community. I couldn't believe that that is fathomable, but it is, and to bring over 140 jobs. And my husband said it was really entertaining today to see the servers on roller skates, you know, brought us back to those 50s moments, you know, when you see the car hops going out of the roller skates. I think it's just an enjoyable way to spend an afternoon, so.
Madam Vice Mayor, I know how busy you are, but I can't help, may I indulge you for one more moment about that very issue, about jobs in the community? May I?
Certainly.
We have hired about 140 young people. All but a handful literally live in the City of Homestead. There's a few that live a little north of here, but I think they consider Homestead the community anyhow. I have never been, I spent seven hours in the kitchen one day last week during the opening session with these kids that are working like you've never seen. They're fast, they're efficient, they were having a lot of fun, there's a good environment in there. I spent seven hours in there. By the time I left, one of the young people who was supervising that section told me, "Mr. Winton, I have to tell you, I'm really happy that you were in here with us, but if you were really doing this job, I would've fired you four hours ago." There's enthusiasm, they're great kids. I've never been prouder of a group in my entire life. And we have senior management here with us right now from Sonic Corporate Headquarters. They told us, in the last couple of days, that this is the finest crew of young people they've ever seen in a Sonic restaurant. Now, that's a testament to the kind of work ethic that you all have here in Sonic. And I have to tell you, I'm just proud as I can be to work with these kids and very proud to be a part of the Homestead community. And I wanna thank the administration and all of you in the community here because the support we've received across the board has been unparalleled, and I'm just thrilled to death to be a part of it. So thank you, and thank you for indulging me.
I'm sure you, we will all agree that makes us feel very proud that we have, well, of course, we know we have such a wonderful staff, but it's nice to hear other people say it as well. So I guess, anybody in the audience, if we're under public hearing, who would like to speak in opposition or in favor? Okay, one at a time.
My name is Clara Walden Powell, 2274 Southeast 27th Drive. I had the pleasure of speaking at Planning and Zoning. I now have the pleasure of speaking to the council. Jobs, 140 jobs. Serving hamburgers is great. How many more are they going to hire to do beer and wine? Traffic, traffic's already backed up. I've heard from my Toastmasters group how traffic is bad. Just talked to the minister. Traffic is bad in the area. Family-friendly, family-friendly. Oh, honey, let's go down and get a hamburger. Ooh, and let's get beer and wine, and that gets in with us. Not family-friendly to me, and I do like to have a drink, what's it what? I'm old and I'm allowed to drink. I'm over 21. To me, that's not family-friendly. Also, being an ex-industrial engineer, you have to turn over so many, so many people in that patio area to make your finances. It's not gonna be a sit-down leisurely like the Longhorn or the Red Lobster or the Olive Garden. You've gotta get them in and out off that patio selling their hamburgers, and therefore you're gonna have a quicker turnaround time with the beer and wine. It is next to Exit 2 on the turnpike. This is the first Sonic that they're thinking about putting liquor in. I do not wanna be known as Homestead City had the first beer and wine and so when that one got killed on the turnpike. Sonic, you're out of the, be aware of your brand. You're known for hamburgers. You don't wanna be known as a place to go get beer and a glass of wine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to say anything? Mr. Powell? Husband and wife here?
Edward Powell. I'm gonna give you a different address, 745 Southeast 18th Lane.
Are you trying to tell us something?
And we're divided. We are two-family. Chair of Planning and Zoning, you did read the report. I did vote for it. It was four to two. Part of the concern, and what you don't see in the notes, is when they came to us, there were no sketches, no pictures. The description was, we're gonna put a railing around and put some bushes and height. Well, when you, when I drove down back, drove past there, when we heard it, there was the covering, the patio, and four pillars. Pretty wide open to me. So really, I think they're coming to us, if they would've had pictures of when I went by and saw the fence they were putting up. The fence is six feet high, and you'd need a ladder to get over to dock it. And the other concern was that you don't, you can't really get access to that area from the drive-in. And I'm not sure if they, we changed that over to round to the other side, but I think it was, that was, the concern was that we didn't have all that information to make our decision, and it was voted down. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for explaining that. Any other comments in favor or opposition? If not, excuse me for this, but these lights are so hot tonight. If not, then I'll close the public hearing, and comments or questions from council, final? Everybody okay? Okay, we'll call them.
Madam Mayor, we need to vote on the amendment first, and then on the final or as amended.
Okay. Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Councilman Shelley?
The motion is amended?
Yes.
This is on the final. Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Councilman Shelley?
The motion is amended?
Yes.
This is on the final. Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Councilman Shelley?
The motion is amended?
Yes.
All right, next. All right, next, Ryan McFulley.
Yes, moving on to Tab- Yes, moving on to Tab 11. Tab 11 is a final order of the City of Homestead, Florida granting a certificate of use to allow the operation of a restaurant with on-premises sale and consumption of beer and wine located at 2425 Northeast 8th Street as legally described in Exhibit A and providing for an effective date.
I move it. Can I hear a second? Staff report?
Vice Mayor, staff recommends that you and the city council authorize the manager to approve the resolution regarding the stipulated settlement agreement between the City of Homestead and the State of Florida Department of Community Affairs. This action would formalize the agreement between the city and the state on the water supply plan and would enable the city to finalize the evaluation and appraisal report based amendments to its comprehensive plan, which would allow subsequent amendments to the comp plan to move forward. Without this agreement, no amendments to the comprehensive plan can be approved.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Councilman Shelley?
The motion is amended? Yes.
This is on the final.
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Your attorney?
Yes, moving on to your next item, tab 12. It's a resolution of the City of Homestead, Florida approving the stipulated settlement agreement between the City of Homestead and the State, State of Florida Department of Community Affairs concerning the evaluation and appraisal report, year-based comp plan amendments, and the 10-year water supply facilities work plan and related comprehensive plan amendments adopted pursuant to ordinance number 2009-0720 and ordinance number 2009-0721 and providing for an effective date.
I move it.
Do I hear a second? Staff report?
Vice Mayor, staff recommends that you and the city council authorize the manager to approve the resolution regarding the stipulated settlement agreement between the City of Homestead and the State of Florida Department of Community Affairs. This action would formalize the agreement between the city and the state on the water supply plan, and would enable the city to finalize the evaluation and appraisal report based amendments to its comprehensive plan, which would allow subsequent amendments to the comp plan to move forward. Without this agreement, no amendments to the comprehensive plan can be approved. City adopted ordinance number 2009-0720 and 2009-0721, approving various comprehensive plan amendments that addressed issues that were raised in the evaluation and appraisal report. The Department of Community Affairs issued its statements of intent regarding those plan amendments on October 21st, 2009, and found them not in compliance. Subsequently, the parties agreed to resolve their issues involved in the administrative proceeding through this stipulated settlement agreement. The proposed agreement identifies remedial actions necessary for the city to undertake in order to satisfy an in-compliance determination with the DCA. Subsequent to the approval of the agreement, the city will have 60 days upon which to adopt such remedial actions. And these actions are specified in Exhibit B, which identifies adoption of certain maps into the comp plan, revision to the total water subaliment, revisions to the capital improvements schedule, and related revisions to the city's 10-year water supply plan.
Questions or comments from council? Is there anyone here tonight who'd like to speak on this issue? All right. Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition or in favor of? I'll close the public hearing. Any final comments from council? Roll call.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Next item?
Yes, moving on to tab 13. It's an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida approving the request of U.S. Century Bank for a reasoning from agricultural district AU to one-family, one-half-acre state district A2 for property located at 19201 Southwest 328th Street, as legally described in Exhibit A and providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Move it.
All right, second, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, staff report?
We recommend that the vice mayor and council approve the request to rezone the property from agricultural district to the residential zoning category, one-family, per one-half-acre state district A2. The subject property was annexed into the city in 2009 with the comprehensive plan, so future land use designation of a state density. At this time, the existing zoning is agricultural district. In order for the property to be developed as residential, the land use and the zoning must be compatible. At this time, the state density, land use, and agricultural zoning are not compatible. The zoning which implements the land use must be changed to residential. According to comp plan policy 2.1, the state density, land use designation is implemented by the residential zoning categories of A1, one-family per one-acre district, and A2, one-family per one-half-acre district. The applicant is requesting the zoning be changed to A2. This is specified by the comp plan and therefore is acceptable. No other analysis was required, and it was approved by the planning and zoning board unanimously.
Any questions from council?
Just one for the attorney, to the chair, to James White. Just to clarify, they're going for A2, one unit per half acre. If they were to come back, you told me the maximum that they could put on there would be 2.5 homes per acre? Is that what you said earlier?
That is correct. The future land use map designation on the property right now is a state density, and that density pursuant to the comp plan allows for a max of two and a half.
So, at some point, if they ever decided they needed more than max, they would be allowed to be 2.5?
Right. If they wanted to, if they wanted more than that, they would have to come in and seek a future land use map change to some other residential designation with a higher density.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
If I may, I thought we, I remember this from way back, and wasn't it like, wasn't like 2007 that we started in the process of the annexation? 2009 may have been when it was adopted.
It usually, I wasn't here at the time, but it usually takes a couple of years to do an annexation, so I would imagine you're correct in that.
Right. And what it was, it was a 40-acre grove, and there was an additional 40 acres that, at the time, we could have annexed as well. I wish we had, but it wasn't, wasn't to be. And it was a wonderful thing because this would be our opportunity to have more expensive homes and to achieve the ad valorem that we've always been looking for on acreage. We had even talked about one-acre estates. So, I have no problem with the half acre, but I just wanted you to know a little bit of the history, that this was something that came about, and it was a, it was a good thing that we did it. So, is the applicant here? We'll open the public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Matt Pollock. I'm president of Chisholm Architects, 4921 Southwest 74th Court. I'm here to answer any questions regarding the application.
Any questions or comments to, I'm sorry, your name again?
Matt Pollock.
Matt, okay, Matt. Okay, thank you very much. Would anybody like to speak in favor or opposition? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And any final comments or questions from council?
Madam Mayor, just before you vote, I would like to disclose that from time to time we have done a closing for Century, for Century Bank.
Okay. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Done?
Move it.
Next item?
Yes, moving on to your last quasi judicial item, tab 14. This is an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida amending the development order for the villages of Homestead, development of regional impact, finding that said amendment does not constitute a substantial deviation, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Okay, second. Staff report?
Staff recommends that the vice mayor and council authorize the city manager to approve the notice of proposed change to the villages of Homestead DRI. This would facilitate the large-scale amendment to the comprehensive plan, allowing the Speedway to expand by 12,000 spectator seats, create enhanced fan experience area incorporating display areas, merchandising, entertainment, and food areas. Additionally, it would consolidate the existing Shalley Village and overflow parking by realigning Southwest 137th Avenue and relocating Southwest 336th Street. As part of the process enabling the expansion of the Speedway, the city must consider a notice of proposed change to the previously approved DRI. This type of change is required when the applicant is proposing simultaneous increases and decreases to a multi-use DRI. And it's done so to show that the changes do not represent a substantial deviation from the approved DRI. We reviewed the application's extensive data analysis against the substantial deviation criteria as defined by the State of Florida. As a result, it's agreed, or we agree, that the proposed amendment to the DRI does not create an additional or unrevealed regional impacts compared with the impacts of the baseline 1985 development order.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Shelley?
Vice Mayor, on this, on this issue, I support the expansion, I support the application. But the question I have, the concern I have, at the last hearing we had, I think, involving this applicant, it was on land that they owned at the time. Well, this is land that we own, so when we, when we go through this modification, if they put any expansion or build any additional improvements on our land, theoretically, there could be a tax increase to us at the city, because we're paying the taxes on the land. And I know that we, we kind of discussed that in detail at the last hearing, but we never really got any additional information provided to us since then. And so, you know, my concern is, I don't know what that number is, you know? I feel a little uncomfortable, I have some concerns in that it's an open-ended number. We don't know what the improvements are, we don't know what the potential tax liability would be. Maybe it's small, maybe it's the diminished amount, and it's not, it's not even worth looking at because of the benefits that the track brings to the city. But it is information that I think I would like to have, it's something I would like to look into between now and, say, a second reading, before I, before I give any kind of final consent on this. So, I mean, it's something that I would like staff to look at. I don't know if anybody else in the council is concerned about it, but it is something that I'm, I'm concerned about and would like to see some sort of discussion take place as far as what tax consequences might come to us at the city, and, and see if there's some way of resolving that over time.
Mr. Shelley? Sorry. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Well, just to his tax consequences, we are, as most of you know, I asked for and received permission from this board to, to move forward in an initiative to try to help us to do away with the ad valorem tax that we have out there, or maybe not specifically do away with it, but find a way to get it funded. And we have reached out to the Speedway, we've reached out to a lobbyist firm that helps the city, and we are now putting together and should soon have a strategy that I would like to bring back to you guys as soon as we get it. Unfortunately, one of the gentlemen that was working with it has lost both of his parents in the last six weeks, so we've been set back a little bit. I would have hoped they've had something by now, but we are in the process, they have been willing to help us, and I think we're going to come up with a strategy that will, will hopefully, and, and should work in Tallahassee, and will help us not, not to do away with the ad valorem tax, because that is a big burden that I, that the whole state has to do away with, not just Homestead or, or the Speedway. But our strategy is to go after a different route, and I think that so. Not to answer what the taxes are going to be, Mr. Shelley, but that we are working on that to try to do away with it, so, just a quick update.
Certainly.
Yeah, I, I talked to the track about it, they're working very hard with, with us at the city level to address that tax issue, and so I want to commend you for that. I think together we'll be able to solve the problem. My only concern as the person voting on this is that until I have more concrete numbers, it just gives me an uneasy feeling, you know? But once I see it, once it's explained to me, once we have the facts, then I think I'll be fine. But until I have them, I, you know, if we don't, the solution doesn't work, then I will vote for something with an open-ended potential liability, and that concerns me. And that's, I just want to make sure I state that for the record, and hopefully we can get that addressed in some information that comes forward before the second reading.
And I too share those same, those same thoughts, and that's why, and I think, from what I understand from the Speedway, they share those thoughts, and they know that that has been a thorn under the saddle since the inception of the racetrack. And as they expand, they realize it's even more and more of a problem, so. But I agree with you, a specific number would be, would be helpful, so that when people do ask me, I can give them some sort of, some sort of round figure, you know? Of course, nothing's exact, but that, but let it be known that we are working hard to do away with it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burgess. I just want to say that I, to me, the track, you put Homestead on the map. You put Homestead on the map. Without you, we wouldn't have had the growth that we needed to save our city back in 2002. We wouldn't have had that growth, and we needed that growth, no matter what some people may think. We had to have it in order to survive. And as far as the ad valorem goes, you know, you have in your presentation, this is going to be spread out even 12 to 15 years. Am I correct in that?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I don't know what kind of figures you're going to come back with to really satisfied, because it's so far out, you know? It's such a far time. But it would devastate this city, it would devastate this racetrack if we don't move together as a group to, to make this happen for you. Because the last thing in the world that I want to see is a negative, something negative, when we're already fighting to keep you here and to keep that race here. So, to me, we have to be very, very diligent, and we have to really know what we're doing when we make this vote. And I completely support you, completely support you. And I'm just worried about the figures that are going to come back as to how clear that's going to make. Can anybody answer that?
We'll have to get you the best figures we can. Whatever we give you will be an estimate.
But those figures are based on today and not going to be based on the future. And I think, I don't know the exact date, but I think we go back with certain contract negotiations in like 2016, 2017, don't we? This old, this brain isn't working as, I think it's possibly 2016, 2017, we go back and we have the ability to renegotiate some things.
It's many years off, it's actually longer than that. 2016 is, I think, there's a bond issue that comes into play at that point.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, in 2020, there's a lease payment change.
Okay.
But the renegotiation is at a point even beyond that, I believe.
Okay. And then, and then this is even, like you say, 12 to 15 years.
It is.
So, I just want, I just want us to be very diligent with, with, you know, some of the, the issues of how important this is to keep this racetrack healthy, alive, vibrant, and bringing all those people here every single year. So, any other comments or...
Yes, sir. Let me, let me ask, well, let me first say that I've always supported the racetrack, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the expansion, even though it's, you know, many years away. And I share the same sentiments with my colleagues, but I, as, as I agree with Vice Mayor, I don't know how much real numbers they're going to bring back that will affect my decision at all in this expansion. So, I wanted to put that on the record so that you understand exactly what my position is with your expansion of the track.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Burgess?
Vice Mayor, the only reason I would ask for something is, there has been some, some lobbying by residents and stuff that perhaps aren't throwing out real numbers. So, I don't want people getting those numbers in their mind either.
That's what I'm saying.
And having a bad ed, and having a bad taste or a bad education on what's trying to happen out there with numbers that, you know, even if we use today's numbers, okay, we have to take it with a grain of salt and say it is today's number.
Exactly.
But at least it would be somewhat real. Where, when I go to people and we talk, I hear a lot of not-real numbers coming up as to what it's going to be.
And if I may answer, that's exactly the point I'm trying to make, is that the figures that you get are not necessarily going to be the figures that are going to be in...
Right, I understand that, but at least the figures that we had would be somewhat realistic compared to some numbers that are being thrown out there now that are totally warped to one side of the argument.
Gotcha. Okay, any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the audience as far as opposing or in favor of? I'll close the public hearing. Roll call.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. One issue that I just want to bring to your attention. On, on the proposed ordinance, that's before your consideration this evening, on page seven of the CAR, on the ordinance, paragraph, paragraph 2-18, which deals with water conservation, little halfway down in the middle, it says, "These devices and methods shall satisfy the criteria outlined in the water conservation plan of the public water supply permit." I've spoken with the applicant about this, and staff is proposing that we delete that actual sentence from this condition. The criteria outlined in the water conservation plan is an exact criteria, it's a number of layered ordinances and a number of different policies that the city has in place that's generally applicable to everyone. So, we're recommending just to take that language out, it does no harm really, because the overall water conservation policies and plans that are in effect for the city are going to be generally applicable to the applicant anyway.
Have you had a conversation?
I have with Mr. Tappanest, their counsel, on this issue.
Okay, so the motion would have to be amended?
And this, is that 219 or 218?
218. Paragraph 218.
Well, I'm, I'm in, I move that we strike out 2.18.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, thank you, Mr. Burgess.
Not, not all of it, just that one sentence. Okay.
Okay, so we need to first vote on the amendment, and then vote on the original. And just to make matters clear, so that everybody knows, if you vote in the affirmative, that means you are moving this forward.
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
One more vote.
Oh, that's right, I know.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll see you next morning.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to legislative matters.
Okay, this is where we're going to add the, the ordinance off of the consent agenda. An ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida amending the city's fiscal year budget beginning October 1st, 2010, ending September 30th, 2011, by increasing the total budget revenues and expenditures by $4,178,120, providing for severability and an effective date.
Have a motion?
Second.
Standards and second is staff report?
Yes, Vice Mayor, this is, purpose of this amendment includes to roll the amounts encumbered for an ongoing capital projects of fiscal year and 2010 into the current fiscal year's budget, appropriate additional funds needed during the 2011 fiscal year for the Miami-Dade County Water and Sewer Departments. City expected to finalize a contract with the county to pay bulk rate sewage fees, but the agreement has not yet been finalized. Staff recommends the mayor and council approve and amend the fiscal year 2011 budget for various funds as part of the tax schedule.
Thank you. This was on the county agenda, so we have, had time to discuss it then, but I'll go ahead and ask if there's any questions or comments from council. I'll open up the public hearing, and anyone in the audience that would like to speak in, in favor or opposition? Final comments from council? Roll call.
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Next item is an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida amending the City of Homestead code ordinance by many chapter two administration by creating Article 25, procedure for settlement of liability workings compensation claims, creating section 2-700, settlement of liability workings compensation claims, providing for implementation, providing for ratification, provide for severability, inclusion of the code, conflicts, and effective date. This is the first reading.
Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Okay, staff report?
Vice Mayor, since 1996, the city managers had authorization to settle claims above $5,500 per administrative order 96-02-31. per administrative order 96-02-31. That administrative order did not set an express limit above that amount. The purpose of this amendment is to formally adopt the settlement authority allocation procedure in the code, and also to set the limit for which the manager has the authority to settle at $10,000.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yes, quick question. Um, do we have many of these, uh, settlements, uh, of this amount? I need some more seats up there.
Good evening. Um, they're routine in nature, and I wouldn't say there's many, but probably you'd have about three, four quarters, something like that.
Uh, another question, uh, to, to the city manager, to the, uh, to the Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, will we be, will we be able to get reports, uh, of these settlements, uh, if, when they happen?
Yes.
Because I, I know some of them, I don't get, I don't know if we've entered or, you know, for the, the amount. I've never gotten them other than the normal lawsuits that we've entered into.
We'll make a practice of getting, uh, regular reports to the mayor and council.
Okay.
Excellent question, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any comments from the audience? Final comments from council? Roll call.
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Next item is an ordinance of the City of Homestead, Florida, amending the city code by amending Chapter 6 Buildings and Building Regulations by creating Article 13's Unsafe Structures, including enforcement procedures, providing for severability, inclusion in the code, and an effective date. First reading.
I'll move it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Staff report?
Vice Mayor, the Board of County Commissioners of Miami-Dade County, Florida, adopted Miami-Dade County Ordinance Number 11-03. This ordinance permits municipalities to adopt their own ordinances, establishing an administrative process to address unsafe structures within municipal boundaries. It is therefore advisable to amend Chapter 6 Buildings and Building Regulations of the city code to address unsafe structures within the city, allowing for savings in cost and time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support or opposition? Final comments? Roll call.
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is, um, it's to, Lend a Hand, Lend a Hand. I'm sorry, our tabs were, were kind of mixed up in our book this week, so we've had a little bit of confusion as we go through this. Um, Tab 17 for all, for those that you know. And staff report on this?
Richard, did you want to do this one? Because I know it's a...
Richard, I'm sorry?
Yeah. Question. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The staff recommends a donation of $20,000 to WeCare South Dade for the Lend a Hand program. Uh, the approval of this item will also authorize the manager to, uh, to execute the enclosed memorandum of understanding. Just to give you a little bit of background, uh, the Lend a Hand program is a program we've been working with since 2005, uh, and we award them every year a $20,000 check. And WeCare South Dade manages that program. Uh, and the program basically is to help customers pay City of Homestead electric utility bills. Uh, it's usually a one-time assistance program, um, and it helps people who are going through difficult situations. Uh, we have, uh, WeCare, we have a representative of WeCare here tonight, uh, that could give you a little bit more background on what they do with the program. They've done a very good job with us, uh, managing the program, and we do refer a lot of customers over to them. And like I said, they've been a good partner with us since 2005.
Okay, um, I'm doing this a little backwards, but can I get a motion, please?
I move it.
Second.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
Um, has, has there always been a cap of $200, or is this something that is new?
Can anyone answer that? Or maybe Kamitra could answer it.
I'm sorry, would you repeat the question?
The question is, uh, has there always been a, a cap of $200?
Yes.
Can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Kamitra Driver, 1515 Redland Road.
And Kamitra is the executive director of WeCare.
Yes, I am.
And this is something that we've been doing for...
Since 2005.
2005?
Yes.
And it's really helped. I know, how many families do you help?
We average, every year, uh, we set out to serve at least 100 families, and we usually serve between 115 and 120. Because, because of the $200 cap per family, not every family that comes in requires that maximum amount. So we're able to stretch the dollars a little bit. And over the years, we've learned some valuable lessons, and we've partnered more with other organizations, uh, throughout the cities of Homestead and Florida City that provide similar service to kind of stretch our dollars. So, um, for instance, with the city of, I mean, um, the Miami-Dade County, uh, Department of Human Services over at the Florida City Neighborhood Center, they have a program that helps with utility assistance as well. So we work with them to send our families there first to exhaust their funds, and then once those funds are exhausted, then we begin using the help funds. So we've noticed over the past years, we're able, our funds, instead of lasting where the first year, they lasted us four weeks, now we're able to last maybe about two to three months.
It's a wonderful service that you do, and I'd like to ask my fellow council to join me at the, at the podium so we can make a presentation to you.
Okay.
Roll call. I'll do it. Yes. Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waldman? Yes. Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Said, I'd hate to have to bring this big check back.
Yeah, it'd be embarrassing, yeah, with Dale.
We're running back and forth trying to find Steve looking at Dave saying, "I don't have that."
So it's our pleasure tonight to present you, to present you with a check for $20,000.
I know, we all want one.
Two things I want to say real quickly. Um, just, I always like to clarify every year that WeCare does not use any of these funds, um, for administrative costs. All $20,000 goes directly towards, uh, individuals that are getting assistance with their utilities. So it's an in-kind service that WeCare provides because we really believe in this. And then on behalf of the Board of WeCare and then all of our partners, um, Project SOS, Mujad, Infamilia, and Galata, I'd like to thank the City of Homestead for again making this donation towards us.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have on our agenda, uh, business from the city manager. But before that, if we don't mind, Mr. Burgess needs to go to a memorial.
I can't leave, so...
Oh, that's right. Okay, all right, go ahead. We wouldn't have a quorum.
Uh, Vice Mayor, real quick, I just wanted to ask, uh, Mr., I'm sorry.
Question, but we're not voting on anything else, are we?
No, but, but once the quorum is gone, it's gone. Meaning has to end. Yeah. So, I'm fine. We'll, we'll keep it real quick. Uh, I, Mr. Maitan has just a little bit of business regarding, uh, our cleanliness program and what we're going to need before a certain date. So I thought I could just introduce that on the floor so you could get the heads up.
Okay.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and, uh, City Council. Um, today I received the contracts for the two inmate crews that we, uh, asked for you in March, uh, council meeting, to go ahead and move forward. Um, the deadline for us to get it in is July 10th. So I wanted to let you know and be aware that the state has awarded us the two con, uh, inmate crews so we can start to, you know, pick up on the corridors around the city.
Yeah, but we're going to probably need a special call in order to get it done, correct?
Correct. I'm going to need a special call.
Okay.
What is your deadline?
Uh, July 10th.
So we're going to have somebody call you and try to coordinate that with some of the other issues that we discussed at the last meeting. Uh, so I just wanted to give you the heads up to expect that as well.
I think we have a special call next Tuesday, correct?
Yes, well, it's been proposed.
Proposed.
Right, I, I don't know that we received consensus on that yet.
Not at this time. We'll be scheduling that this week.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, city attorney?
No report other than I, that I, uh, have been trying to work with the clerk's office to try to get the, the special call meeting dealing with the, so there can be a full discussion of the lawsuits.
Oh, I'm good. I'm good for it.
And, um, I know that, uh, at least one council person's available Monday and Tuesday. Um, but I guess Anna, you're checking with the, or Elizabeth Sullis is checking with the other council members to try to make sure that we get as many people as possible. I sent you an email, um, which was a correspondence from Joe Sirota, just that the judge did grant the continuance, but is really anxious to have us consider this one way or the other by July 1st.
Thank you. Um, council, uh, Council Shelley?
Uh, nothing at this time, truly.
Okay, Councilman Williams?
Uh, nothing at this time to help my colleague get to where he needs to be.
Well, unfortunately, I do have to take a quick minute, but it's very important.
Well, then that, I, I take that back. Then let me, I have about 20 minutes.
Just a little one minute. I've, uh, you know, I'm not long when you do it. Homestead Police, Project SOS, and South Dade Weeden Seed are putting a, a back-to-school fair together again in, uh, with Malay Sports out at the stadium, Saturday, August the 13th. They would hope to raise, or excuse me, get 2,000 backpacks slash book bags that they could give out. Last year, they gave out 900, um, and they had a need for a lot more. So this year, their goal is for 2,000. Um, any businesses, individuals that would like to contribute can call and contribute. The number they can call is 305-224-5585. Uh, so like I said, and I know I'm going to, uh, contribute, so if any of my fellow council members would like to contribute also.
Who would they be giving these to?
Um, mostly to, uh, the people that are already involved with, that SOS works with.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, they're going to take care of what they call their clients first, and, and then with what they have left over as a remainder, they will get, open up to the general public and, uh, take care of them.
Maybe we could do something combined because I know that the Mexican-American Council, they always have a huge bookbag drive as well. So rather than compete with one another, maybe we could combine that some way. I don't know. You might want to look into that and see what we can do. Would that be something you would mention to that?
Yeah, that's fine. I can, I can let them know. Um, uh, Flor over at SOS is the one that's a contact person, so I will let her know. Thank you.
All right.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm not going to say anything except that, um, it's getting close to 4th of July. So here's the little flyer. It's on our city website. Um, it's going to be at the racetrack again this year. We expect a lot of people. It's going to be fabulous. We have tons of entertainment for the children, um, bands, just lots of fun. Right, Dennis? We really were tard on this, so I hope you can come. And, um, we have some business that we have to take care of before I adjourn, and that is Mayor Bateman, um, who's asked me to, uh, bring forth Jack Patrick Self. Is he in the audience? Mr. Self? Um, he's been recommended to be on the firefighter's retirement plan trustee appointment. Um, do I just need an, I need a motion? Okay.
I'll move it.
Okay, all in favor? All? Any opposed? I want that passes. And so with that being said, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.